shall be done away with. A country of brotherhood, where all success shall be founded on service and honor shall be given to the deserving. A country of peace, where government shall rest on the will of the people and the love for the common good. Bless the efforts of those who struggle to make this vision a living reality. Inspire and strengthen our people that they may give time, thoughts and sacrifice to speech the day of the calming beauty of Ghana in Africa. Amen.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. We thank God for yet a new day and a new week. Today, we are looking at the whole of government accounts of the Audit General and Ministry of Finance in the reports of the Audit General for the ministries, departments and other agencies for the year ended 2024. And as part of the reports, honorable members, if you would recall, it was revealed in the whole of government accounts reports that there was an apparent overstatement of the national debt by 138.91 billion. And I assured the nation that we'll get to the bottom of this. Leadership has done this, and I'm glad the Controller and Accountant General is here with audit service to make sure the things that they clarify to us will be known to Ghanaians. And I believe that at the end of the day, we all see that it did not materially affect our fiscal position, but our recommendations will be known after they have explained to the people of Ghana. And so on this note, since it's a report for 2024, and in 2024, the chairperson was in government, I'll see the proceedings, the chairperson's proceedings for today's hearing to the ranking member. And I know the ranking member will do a very good job because he's been doing that the whole of last week. And so ranking member, on this note, I'd like to hand over to you for today's engagement with Ministry of Finance, Controller and Accountant General as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. At this point, the honorable members will introduce themselves to our guest. Yes, let's, Honorable Day, start with introduction, please.
Good morning. My name is Sebastian Deh. I am the Member of Parliament for Bando in the Volta Region, and I'm a member of this committee.
Chairman, my name is Thomas Ampim. I'm MP for Asoljaman and a friend of the committee.
Minister, you can't be a friend of the committee. You are here today. That's why you are sitting with us.
Good morning. My name is Godfred Seidu Jesao. I'm MP for Y East and a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Eric Edem Agbana, MP for Kethunov, a member of the committee.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Simon Akibang Awurgo, MP for Nabrongo Central and a member of the committee.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Kletus Seidu Dapla, MP for Girapa, member of the committee.
Good morning. I am Alhaj Muhammad Bah Abraham, representing the good people of Jura Sechadumasi and a member of this committee.
Good morning. I'm Michael Amotin. The clap to the committee. Thank you.
Good morning, Sheli Che, Member of Parliament at Remo Wabi Ajasal, member of the committee.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. My name is Nanos Eji, Member of Parliament for the good people of New Job Inov and a member of the committee.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Jofri Kine is my name. I represent the good people of Nkouanta South and a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Ernest Yaweni, Member of Parliament Kumahu and a member of this committee.
Good morning. My name is Honorable Alexander Gabi Hotoga, the MP for Central Town in the Volta Region and a member of the committee.
Hello, good morning. I am Samuel Attamills, MP for Comenda Edina Igwafo Abrim and a ranking member of this committee.
Good morning. I'm Davis Anson Opoku, Member of Parliament for the people of Imprisso, the Vice Chairman of the committee.
Good morning. My name is Abnos Sayasa, a Member of Parliament for Y East and the Chairperson of the committee. Thank you.
All right, now we'll call in the Controller and Accountant General. And Clark, please swear the name. Have this one in?
Aye.
Aye.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God. Honorable Minister, please introduce yourself and your delegation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my name is Thomas Ampim, Deputy Minister for Finance, and to my right is our Chief Director, Mr. Patrick Nomu. And we have, to my immediate left, the Controller and Accountant General, Mr. Akwesi Eje.
Can they introduce themselves, please?
Okay.
Honorable Chair, I am Patrick Nomu, Chief Director of the Ministry of Finance.
Honorable Chair, I'm Kesi Eje, the Controller and Accountant General.
Honorable Chair, I'm Mark Effort Kokku Adadi, Assistant Controller and Accountant General and the Director in Charge of the National Accounts.
Honorable Chair, I'm Ibede Okonwabatin, Deputy Controller and Accountant General for Financial Management Services.
Honorable Chair, I am Paulina Akurugo, Assistant Controller and Accountant General, Director of Payroll.
Thank you very much for coming. We will start today's proceedings by going through the overstatement of public debt. And Honorable Abna Oseasari will take that one.
Yeah, thank you. Controller and Accountant General, I know you are responsible for, let me put it, the financial statements of government. And as part of the financial statement that was captured, the parts with public debt, the Audit General reported that it had been overstated by 138 million Ghana cedis. When this came to light, we, as leadership of the committee, called the Audit General and we called Controller and Accountant General. And then you gave us some explanation as to why this occurred. And in actual fact, this, the difference, had to do with the unguaranteed loans of the state-owned enterprises. So we are giving you the opportunity to explain to Ghanaians and also affirm or otherwise whether this had any fiscal impact in a way that is detrimental to the finances of government. And then we can proceed from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, what I will say is that we prepare whole of government accounts covering the local, the local government, that's the MMDs, central governments and then SOEs. So when it comes to the debt figure, we look at that for central government and guaranteed SOEs, and then the unguaranteed SOEs. And the summation of the two gives us a total for the whole of government accounts. When we did that, our figure for the whole of government accounts was 861.4 billion. And that of the central government and the guaranteed SOEs came to 711 billion, 0.4 billion. And this is why we reported in the financial statement. But after the report I submitted to Parliament, we met with the auditors and then we reconciled, we did some reconciliation, but we still came back with the same figure, the same 861 billion for whole of government and then 711.4 billion for central government and guaranteed SOEs. So so far as we are concerned, we reconciled, the figures haven't changed. It is as we see in the financial statement, it's the same as we have after the reconciliation. And they haven't impacted on the accounts of the states. There wasn't an overstatement, but just some few reconciliation that we have to do with the auditors. Thank you.
Well, I can also say that I have the breakdown of the difference, and that pertains to the various SOEs. What we would want you to do moving forward is collaborate more with the audit service and also let your responses be timely, because they are also bound by when to report these, when to submit these reports to Parliament. You know, there's a timeline, by end of June, they also have to report, get their reports ready and submit to Parliament. So that when you don't respond on a timely basis, it affects what they do. So I believe we have brought some clarity to this issue of the overstatement of public debt. The difference had to do with the unguaranteed state-owned enterprises, which we have the breakdown, and that did not materially affect the accounts of government. So I'd like to bring this to an end. And then ranking, thank you.
Thank you very much. So the numbers haven't changed. They are the same.
Yes, Madam Chair, the numbers haven't changed. They are the same as reported in the financial statement.
Thank you. And what is the debt now?
For the whole of government accounts is 861.4 billion.
0.4 billion.
And this includes the central government with the guaranteed SOEs and then unguaranteed SOEs.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The unguaranteed SOEs are debts that sit in the books of state-owned enterprises. And until it crystallizes and they are not able to pay, that is when you see Ministry of Finance adding it onto their debt. But if the state-owned enterprises are paying, there's no need to add it on to the central government debt. So clearly, there's a difference between the central government debt and the unguaranteed debt of the SOEs. So far as they are paying, Ministry of Finance cannot add it on to the central debt. Otherwise, it will amount to double counting of the debt. But what sits in the books of Ministry of Finance is the central government debt, which the minister reported in the budget, in the mid-year review budget, and what the Audit General also stated as a little over 700 billion. And that is what is captured. And when you go to Bank of Ghana too, that is what is captured. But they are preparing the whole of government accounts, and government also has stakes in these SOEs, and so they need to show their debt as well. So that explains for the difference.
Madam, the way you're talking, I see you work that finance ministry before. All right, Minister.
Mr. Chairman, this is a very, very important conclusion that we need to bring to the attention of every Ghanaian and everybody who has interest in Ghana. It was worrying for an impression to be created that the Controller and Accountant General had overstated Ghana's public debt. And so this conclusion, sending the message clear to everybody that there was no overstatement of the public debt and that the public debt as stated remains the same, is the most important conclusion that I think everybody must take out of this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Kletus.
Chairman, to add to what the Deputy Finance Minister said, the auditors, I think that the Controller and Accountant General is responsible for government account. So if you had a different figure, I think you should have reached out to them immediately to reconcile before putting it out there. Because people...
Hold on. This issue has been resolved.
Oh, it hasn't?
Yes.
Yes.
See, Chairman, let's don't be doing this.
Go ahead and make your point. Go ahead, go ahead.
All I want to say is that, you see, Controller and Accountant General, we have our written agencies, Fich, Moody's, all of that, who listens to us or who are always written us. So when you come out to say that the Controller has overstated our public debt, it has an effect, and the credibility of the Controller is a stick. That is a point that I simply want to make. So let's be, let's try to reach out as much as possible so that we don't come out with these discrepancies. Thank you.
Honorable Jesao.
Chairman, I, because you've ruled, I wanted to allow it to go. Just checking with you, will it not be fair to hear what the Audit General has to see in response to this? Because it appears this, we are dealing with Audit General's publication and his reports. And so if the Controller and the Minister of Finance are here to restate that it's been resolved, they reconciled it, all that, but this is also the report from the Audit General, I feel it's fair to just hear them, what it is, why do we have this? What went wrong? Is there any lessons to learn going forward? You know, is there any recommendations from them? Maybe that will be a better service to the Ghanaian and the taxpayer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Audit General.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Would you leave, I will ask my colleague who is responsible for this particular report to respond to it. Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Paul Afram, Assistant Audit General in charge of whole of government account audit. Actually, when the issue came up, we issued observation to the Controller and Accountant General for explanation. And the response Controller and Accountant General gave was to engage Ministry of Finance for reconciliation. Unfortunately, because we were pressed with time and we needed to also meet our mandate under the constitution, we issued a report. And after that, reconciliation had been done, and we can certify that the public debt is as is in the whole of government account. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. The next paragraph is on, the next one is on misclassification of impairment loss as provision of investment. Honorable Davis Opoku Ansa would hand out that one. It's paragraph 19.
Thank you very much. So Controller, the Audit General highlights misclassification of some 74.24 billion. And you know that instead of recording this as an impairment loss, it was wrongly recorded as a provision for investment. You also appreciate the fact that this error affects how government's financial position is presented. Since impairment losses and provisions have different meanings under proper accounting standards. I want to find out from you why this 74.24 billion was misclassified? And if you could go a bit further to let us know who approved this accounting treatment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will ask my Director for National Accounts, Dr. Mark Effort Adadi, to respond to this observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. The issue as raised by auditors has to do with an accounting treatment that we prefer in the whole of government account for investments largely sitting in the books of the SOE. When you look at IFSA's, the prescriptions of the standard as quoted by the auditors is just what it is, and we do not dispute this. But there is something we would like to bring to the attention of the honorable committee and the whole country, leading to the way we treated this particular item in the whole of government account. Ghana, yes, adopted IFSA's as required under the PFM Act, that the Controller has the role to prescribe accounting standard that conforms with internationally acceptable standard. On the basis of that, we have set out to pursue this IFSA's agenda. But the IFSA's board, those who develop the IFSA's as standard to guide countries who are using these standards, in the preface acknowledged the fact that in the implementation of the IFSA's, a country may encounter a situation where requirement of some specific standards may conflict with national laws. So on the basis of this, the practitioners, as in the implementers of IFSA's, have come out with two principles to guide implementers when you find a situation where IFSA's prescription contradicts with your national law. And that's the case we are looking at now. So I will take a little time to explain to the House. There are two principles here. One principle is primacy of national laws. And the second is adaptation, not a blind adoption. Now, under the principle of primacy of national law, it has, it's been specified that when a specific requirement of a specific standard conflicts with a national law, the national law prevails. And when this account finds itself in this situation, the requirement is to review your law to accommodate the prescription of the standard, because the standard is an international standard. So to get to this point, the principle of adaptation, not blind adoption, will have to be employed, to prefer accounting treatment that does not contradict the laws and also does not materially conflict with the IFSA's requirements. So applying this to the instant case, Honorable Chair, we have established the fact that there are investments in the books of state-owned enterprises when we are doing the consolidation. And it is true that they, they themselves did some review and recorded impairments on this investment. But when you look at the law and as we responded to the Audit General in our response to the observation, I humbly refer all of us to section 53 of the PFM Act. Session 53 of the PFM Act, for the sake of time, let me read. The title is abandonment of claims and write-off of public funds. And session 53, 1B says, "The minister shall seek the approval of Parliament to abandon or remit a service to the government and write off a loss of a deficiency in public funds or public resources." On the basis of this, Honorable Chair, as much as we acknowledge that there are some impairment on this, we don't see, think we have the power to just write them off the books of government without going through Ministry of Finance and Parliament for approval. And to accommodate these provisions of the law and IFSA's, we actually made provision in the whole of government account to take care of this impairment. And when you go to statement of performance, I can refer you to the specific page. We have really taken, made a provision from the statement of financial performance to take care of this impairment. And instead of us deducting it direct from this investment and reporting the net in the balance sheet or statement of financial provision, we reported this investment at gross and reported the provision under liability. So the net effect on both statement of financial position and statement of financial performance is the same as IFSA's want us to achieve. So technically, we are applying the adaptation, not blanket adoption, and the primacy of national law in the treatment we gave to this. We thought we should bring to attention to this, Honorable House, and our auditors and those listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your answer. Thank you. So I mean, thank you for appreciating this impairment loss. But you also agree with me that, I mean, from your end, you cannot do anything with it about it until it comes to Parliament. I mean, that's what the PFM Act and the Constitution of the Republic says. What steps have you taken to address these concerns?
Yeah, Honorable Chair, thank you. The first step is to engage the individual entities who have this in their records, to really appreciate this impairment and then get them to write to Ministry of Finance. Ministry of Finance will assist them, of course, to collate all this, and Ministry of Finance will have to take steps to come to Parliament for this. So with this on the agenda now, with the audits, we just have to start the process. And Honorable Chair, let me use this opportunity to acknowledge the contribution of auditors to improving the quality of the national account, even this very account we are looking at. We, under the pressure of Controller to produce this account, sometimes certain things slip through, but for the audit, we didn't have record, identified them. And they drew our attention to certain things, and we did further probe even to identify certain things on our own. So we would like to really acknowledge the contribution of auditors, and this very thing should be seen as a matter of national interest and not auditors getting at Controller. But we do our best to make sure we take the nicest steps to get them addressed. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you. Before I bring in the auditors, I want to find out from you, does this misclassification affect debt sustainability ratios presented to Parliament and the international lenders? Does it do that?
Not at all.
So auditors, I would want your take on this.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We actually, I mean, understand the concerns raised by Controller and Accountant General. But what we would want to state is that the standard, which is IFSA's 41, do allow entities to make an allowance for expected credit loss depending on the credit risk. So the point of referring the impairment loss to Parliament, I mean, for us, it's a little bit on ease for us, because the impairment loss is not a write-off. A write-off will constitute derecognition of the financial assets from the books of accounts. But impairment loss is more or less like depreciation. You don't need approval from Parliament for depreciation. When you read the PFM, the PFM was saying write-off and not allowance for expected credit loss. And for that matter, we would endorse the Controller and Accountant General going forward to, like this year past, prior year adjustment to rectify the misclassification. Thank you.
Okay. Now let me go to the next one. The next one...
The next one is non-recognition of income tax and VAT receivables. What says you, Controller and Accountant General?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue when it came up, we, we had an engagement with GRA. We spoke to a top official of GRA. And then personally myself, I had a meeting with the Commissioner General. And what they said confirmed our position. The issue is that taxes are assessed on cash basis in Ghana. And until that is done, it will be difficult, because even if at the end of thirty-first, if they give us any receivables as, any figure as receivable, that could be provisional. And then this will also be subject to disputes and legal issues. So at the end of the day, those provisionals, a lot of the amount there might not be collectible. And we end up having huge buildup of receivables in our accounts. And if we have a lot of receivables in our accounts, we will need a parliamentary approval to be able to write them off. And also have a lot of implications. What it means is that we will be overstating government revenue. We will be overstating government assets. And we will also be creating mismatch between fiscal, fiscal performance and availability of cash. Again, it will also raise issues about credibility, about our fiscal reporting. Because if you have huge receivables in your books and they are still hanging, you are not creating, you are not reporting accurately. It will also raise issues about confidence in our government accounts. So we think that we should tread cautiously on this issue. My brothers, auditors, we want to ask them that we should tread caution. Until the tax laws are amended, where we can have, assessment could be done on accrual basis, then GRA will be certain that if you have these receivables in your books, they are certain that they will be converted to cash promptly. But if you have them rolled up all the time as receivables and they are not converted to cash, they will be creating problems. So that is what we, that's our position now. And I had a meeting with the Commissioner General, and he also confirmed that this is the position until the tax law changes, we will not be able to report on receivables. Thank you.
Auditor General, what do you say about this? Because you are asking the Controller and Accountant General to collaborate with the Commissioner General this issue about cash accounting and accruals when it comes to income tax.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Like you've rightly said, once Ghana has adopted accrual IPSAS, we have reviewed that our revenue, which is, I mean, tax income, should also be recognized under the accrual concept. I mean, we've come of age when we were doing cash accounting. And for that matter, the standard even test, when the taxable event occurs, a revenue has to be, I mean, recognized. So we share the, the concern about Controller and Accountant General to continue to engage Minister of Finance and the GRA as to how best we can strengthen our, our tax system. Thank you.
All right, go ahead, man.
Ministry of Finance, I think you should assist Controller, assist GRA to look at the kind of laws that we need to amend if we are to go the full IPSAS way. And we cannot continue to use this as an excuse to not fully comply with IPSAS. So I'm, I'm sure the Auditor General will be willing to assist you. Let's identify all the things, all the laws that we need to tweak, so that in implementing IPSAS to the full, we can do it without any hindrances. And then we can have a full and complete account for, for, for all of us. And the committee will be very happy to also assist in that regard to make sure it happens. Thank you.
Minister, rightly so. In fact, we've started an engagement with the Controller and Accountant General and the GRA to see if we can align this. But as the Controller explained, there are genuine practical challenges. Because if we go ahead and, and recognize all those revenues and begin to, to plan for them, knowing very well that at the end of the day, practically, as it has been happening, it has always been difficult to reckon all those revenues. Those genuine concerns will also have to be taken into consideration in any decision we make going forward. But ultimately, it is important that we are all on the same page, so that when auditors are coming to audit, they know that these are the laws within which we are. And then we don't go semi-accrual, we are reporting some on full accrual basis and all that. They don't help to be consistent. So I appreciate the concerns, and I think we'll have to take it from here and align everybody properly. Thank you.
All right. The next one will be on paragraph thirty-four, Lack of impairment review of the tangible and intangible fixed assets. And Honorable Simon will take care of that one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I mean, Controller and Accountant General were supposed to conduct an assessment of these assets. There was no impairment test on the assets done. And is there any reason why this wasn't done? Because it's required under IPSAS twenty-one and twenty-six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will ask my Director for National Accounts, Dr. Mark Effort Adadi, to respond to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Yes, this impairment is one very important, I will call it national issue, that again, auditors have raised. And we also need to provide explanation that will further the national attention to this very important IPSAS requirement. The issue even goes beyond just impairment. The issue has to do with the assets of governments that we report in the national account. We are at a stage where we still have significant portion of our national assets not featuring on the balance sheets. So when auditors raise this observation, we drew their attention that as part of the roadmap to get government fixed assets fully reported on the, in the national account, we developed a very comprehensive fixed asset register and deployed. Already, if you don't have the, there are fixed assets in your books, it is even premature to start impairing them. So they should allow us some time, space to work to bring fixed assets of government, all of them, onto the balance sheets. And the values we even have in the balance sheet, we need a second look at them, which I engaged the, the Assistant Auditor in charge of the whole of government account, that we have developed methodology to identify the assets and value them. But those values needed to be, they need to be verified independently. So when we have all these values reported by the covered entities, we get the Auditor General to conduct special exercise to review the value to be sure that we are accurately reporting on them. We have not done that yet. So if you start impairing, impairing the asset, simply reviewing their values, I think we may be a step ahead of ourselves. So we need some time to get there. Having said that, we are still taking steps to develop a strategy to get this done, at least at entity level, for those entities that are ready. So we have currently developed an impairment assessment guideline. We have it currently to share with the auditors. We have a collaborative committee that any technical tool Controller develops, and as required by the PFM Act, we need to seek auditor general's consent through consultation to be sure these tools are, are really okay to be deployed. So we have deployed the tools for impairment assessment. The next step will engage Auditor General and the team to review it. Once we agree, we will start the deployment for the entities to start using it. But before then, let's also pay attention to getting the fixed asset data onto their government balance sheet. Thank you very much.
So is it then the case that at the moment, the assets on the report are stated are overvalued?
Honorable Chair, wouldn't say they are overvalued. We have a very comprehensive accounting methodology to get the values we are reporting. So the values as we have them now are justifiable. But we use accounting I to put, to put those values there. We need audit I to review them. Beyond that, we also need all the assets to come. Then we have a full fixed asset register of government. Then we can engage Ghana Audit Service to review this. Then we all agree on the appropriate value for this asset. Then subsequently, this impairment test can be applied to make sure we report on the appropriate value for these assets. Thank you.
Do you have any timeframe in mind that this will get done?
Yes, we are working to ensure the twenty-twenty-five annual account. Before the production, we might have started deploying this impairment guideline. So we are in August now. Before the, the end of the year, we might have finished all the nursery engagements and we will start the deployments. The next national account is due for submission to the Auditor General in March, or by end of March twenty-twenty-six. We hope to do this before then. Thank you.
But this IPSAS has been in, it was passed about a couple of years ago, right? And it takes that long for you to fully comply?
Yes, Honorable Chair, IPSAS, we've adopted this as long as two thousand and four, but progress has been very slow. And as indicated by Honorable Chair, we even have to look at our laws and then activate very serious institutional action to be able to achieve what we want to achieve fully under IPSAS. But thank God, in the twenty-twenty-three annual account, Ghana became full compliant at a national level. So we are just working to deepen the achievements. And Audit Service has been a very, very useful partner in this regard, including what we are discussing now. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is unreconciled intercompany account balances in the WGA trial balance. And Honorable Nana Osseje will take that one.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Controller, as my chairman said, this one is unreconciled intercompany account balances in the whole of government account trial balance. We all know that the intercompany account balance should have zero balances in the consolidated trial balance. If there are imbalances, I think it has effect on the, on the, on the financial, financial statements of, of, of the country. Let me go to what the auditors said. We recommended that the Controller and Accountant General investigate the source of the balances, opening and closing, which there's, there's a difference in it, and make the necessary consents, corrections to ensure accurate consolidation. Additionally, the consolidation procedures and controls should be reviewed and strengthened, particularly around the closing and the roll-forward mechanisms. Controller, my, my first question to you is, can you please take the committee through the process where you arrived at these imbalances? So that the whole of Ghana will know how you arrive at these figures. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My Director for National Accounts will handle this observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Yes, this is one of the issues, and we want to say, auditors are bringing out to draw attention to systemic issue we have as a country when it comes to financial reporting. So we are not disputing this audit observation, but I would rather use opportunity to throw light on what the situation is. It has to do with the GIFMIS. The GIFMIS has been adopted, was adopted to help both processing of financial transactions and financial reporting from the onset. The setup was originally done to process transactions at budgetary central government level. And for those who have technical eye or mind, we have the charter account that define the classification of transactions on the system. And there's a segment called balancing segment, where we are able to balance the accounts on the system to produce financial statement. Now, when the system was set up, GIFMIS was to produce one balance sheet for the country, just one balance sheet for the country. Till we got to a point where we realized, no, each entity is a spending and reporting entity. It must have the functionality to be able to produce its own set of accounts on the system and balance its own accounts accordingly. But unfortunately, at the time, we were running on budgetary central government. We came to central government, MMDAs, SOEs data were not coming to the system. So when the CADD started a journey to expand the scope of the national account and the need to get each entity to, each reporting entity to balance its own account, the system setup as we had it could not accommodate this. So as we speak, the GIFMIS is able to give us up to trial balance stage. And when we get a trial balance, the transactions that happen between government entities are the intercompany transactions we are talking about. There should be automatic net off. So when Parliament of Ghana enjoys electricity from ECG, when they are producing whole of government account, ECG will report money paid by Parliament to ECG as revenue. And Parliament will report this as expenditure. But if you are treating Ghana as a single economic entity, there is no revenue, there is no expenditure. This should net off to get the zero as Honorable Member indicated. The system should be able to do this automatically. But the setup currently does not support this. But we can also not wait for the system. So we have to find a workaround to address this. So what is happening currently is that we run the trial balance from the GIFMIS anyway. And we identify these intercompany transactions that are, are hanging, instead of being zero. Then we manually do the adjustments when we are doing the consolidation, which auditors duly acknowledge. And that's what we are doing. So the issues raised by auditors have been addressed. They did not impact on the account being audited. We have manually taken care of them during the account consolidation process. But I believe the auditors are drawing attention to the fact that we need to get the system up to speed to address this very key, important, this very important functionality. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Controller. Please, in this, in this particular instance, what happened?
This particular instance, you find, we run, we run the trial balance, the consolidated trial balance. So it's supposed to balance, but you see this intercompany transactions hanging. And that's what the auditors have identified. Something that we ourselves we know of. Auditors are just highlighting it.
Thank you. Controller, so what are the measures being put in place now to avert the occurrence of, of this anomaly? And also give us some timeframe, so that next year we will not be seeing these imbalances again?
Yeah. Honorable Chair, to address this, we really, really need to relook at the GIFMIS. The GIFMIS in its current form requires some refitting. And the scope of the national accounts is above what the GIFMIS can accommodate currently. So we just have to refit the GIFMIS to address this and many other issues that are lingering at this point. So GIFMIS should be given attention, Honorable Chair.
And, Mr. Chairman, I want to confirm that this issue has been brought to the attention of the Ministry of Finance. The Controller and Accountant General has written a report asking for an upgrade of the GIFMIS system. And so it is something that we are looking at to see what can be done to upgrade it so that it can contain the whole of the account and perform all the functions that needs to be performed. And so I cannot give timelines here, because I know of government assurance. But I can confirm that this information has been brought to the attention of the minister, and we are, we are thinking through what to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think it is just a matter of allocating monies for this. That, that is the point. So the minister should set his priorities right, because this is very, very important. It is a matter of allocating money to make sure you get the right licenses and training as well. So this is about funding. And so I would ask that the minister in the twenty-twenty-six budget can allocate some portions of the revenue to, to, to start to 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 start something concerning the GIFMIS system. And I believe that will go a long way to save our country from some of the infractions that the Audit General cites us for. And so it's all about allocating some monies. And so he should set his priorities right and make sure you 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 give you give some monies to to handle this, Honorable Minister. In all fairness, this is not about politics or anything, but I think that it is more about allocating some funding. You cannot, I mean, conclude maybe in one financial year, but at least you can pass away with some funding that if in this year I want to conclude on a portion of it, that will enable all MDA's come on board and do the basic things that the Audit General cites them for. And then in moving forward, we will do the more advanced things and that will be good. And so we'll look out for it in the twenty twenty six budget. I know you are preparing to bring the budget to Parliament, so please pass on this message to your minister. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the former Minister of State at the Ministry of Finance for 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 the admonition. And to say that I know she knows what it is. And the Controller brought this to her attention at the time, and it has been brought to our attention. But I can assure her that we are committed.
Like I said, this is not about politics because as we sit here, we don't do politics.
I'm assuring you.
What we are saying is that you are now in government. And so if it is possible for you to allocate some monies, I'm sure certain things were done. Licenses were renewed and we could not finish everything, but you are in the helm of government now. So continue with where we left off. And I think it's a fair admonition to give.
I am thanking you for the.
People that we were in government and we did some, we renewed certain licenses. So take it up from there. And I think that that should that should be enough.
Honorable Chair, yes, I'm just giving you the assurance that it has been brought to our attention and we are working in earnest to make sure that we upgrade the GIFMIS system so that they can operate well for for all of us. Thank you, Chairman.
This is twenty twenty four report, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. She was there. Okay. Chairman, this goes right.
So, I mean, governance is continuous. So we expect that if it was not done in the past, it should, it doesn't mean that we should. I mean, let's let's continue to progress Ghana. But but, yes, but just to bring to your attention. So last 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 year, when in our in our rounds, especially dealing with the schools and all of that and assemblies, they usually bypass a GIFMIS system with the excuse that their assemblies are not hooked up to the internet. Has this come to your attention and what exactly are you doing to ensure that every assembly or MDA that, I mean, deals with the GIFMIS system has reliable internet access? I mean, this question should be going to the Ministry of Communications, but because a lot of these infractions, I mean, come up all the time, I I I just want to bring to your attention, if you are not aware, let's find a way of releasing funds to ensure that at least every assembly or every MDA is hooked up to the internet so that they do not come with the excuse that we are not connected to the internet, Minister.
Chairman, this is a very good information. And I want to say that today, any MDA that gives internet as an excuse for not operating within the GIFMIS system is just giving that as a convenient excuse. Because, look, we have seen clearly that institutions that are even far away from the capital in the remote areas are using the GIFMIS. And those who are in the cities are rather using internet as an excuse. So that cannot be the real reason why some institutions are failing to operate within the GIFMIS system. In fact, the Budget Committee chaired by Honorable Kwekukwate has started an exercise and they have started inviting every institution that is not operating within the GIFMIS system to explain why they are failing to do so. I participated in that meeting and we are working with Controller to remove all the obstacles, all the challenges for which they are not able to operate within the system. We've given ourselves some timelines. And so I want to believe that next year, it should be difficult for anybody to come here and give an excuse why they are not operating within the GIFMIS system. And so I appreciate this concern, but it is something that we are really, really working on. Thank you.
Okay, this falls right into the the next infraction, partial compliance with GIFMIS usage. And Honorable Shirley, Chair will take that one.
Thank you, Chair. So as Chair indicated, there there are some covered entities that are not fully complying with the GIFMIS system. And we know what this does is to increase the risk of material misstatements and also undermining us to promote accountability, transparency, and effective public financial management system. Why are some covered entities not complying fully? Can you educate the committee on this?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, covered entities subsiding on GOG funding are on GIFMIS. I mean, those who receive releases from Minister of Finance for their payments are all on GIFMIS. The gap is the other funding source, which is the donor, the statutory funds, and the IGF. These are institutions which are not on GIFMIS. And as Honorable Minister said, the Budget Committee actually requested for a list of institutions that are not on GIFMIS. That information was given. I think they started inviting those institutions. But what we want to do as Controller is that we realize that it's very convenient for the covered entities not to use GIFMIS because they are able to refer their payments even outside GIFMIS. And we started a program. We want to do it. We are going to gradually withdraw the manual checks in the system. So gradually, we will draw the manual checks and that will compel them to use the GIFMIS. If you process and you can't effect payment, then of course you'll be compelled to use GIFMIS. And that is what we have discussed with Minister of Finance. We have their support. They are even saying that if there's any payment that is outside GIFMIS at Minister of Finance, we should start with them. So we are going to come out with a program. We've had discussion with GIPS, which is Ghana Interpayment and Settlement System, to use the EFT with the commercial banks. We are going to sign a service level agreement with them, with the commercial banks as well. So we'll do it. We are going to do that and they will be forced. They will be compelled to use GIFMIS. It's something that we are going to do. Thank you.
So these are promises that I look forward to you fulfilling, but how soon can we expect you to do this?
We we did a pilot and I think one that is a Blue Kuma South Municipal Assembly. Currently, they are using the EFT and it's working. We want to build on that and then, as I said, that to be done gradually. We first, we want to identify all the manual checks in the system. We set up a committee with the Controller, Accountant General, Bank of Ghana, who identify them and then we'll take it from there. We also don't want to create inconvenience for the covered entities because if you have withdrawn the manual checks, they should make sure that the GIFMIS system and then the processes are also working very well. So it will take time, but we are looking at the end of the year, we will have withdrawn a lot of the manual checks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to this, in fact, we want to give the covered entities that are not operating fully using the GIFMIS, especially those using their IGFs. They are the the main culprits now. We want to give them the benefit of the doubt. And so as a follow up to the parliamentary engagements with them, we have invited them to meet with the Ministry of Finance and Controller and Accountant General's department. We want to give them, to agree with them on some timelines. Because as the Controller said, after a certain time within this year, you will not be able to spend your money if you are not operating within the GIFMIS system. And because we are government, we also don't want government services to suffer, the citizenry to suffer in assessing some of these services. So we want to be fair to everybody, but very soon we will announce the timelines and after which time manual checks cannot be issued unless you operate within the system. And so I'm sure we can share those timelines with you after we have extensively engaged them next week over the timelines that we agree with them. Thank you.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph fifty three, inadequate disclosure of significant investment and disinvestments. And Honorable Enim will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. So Chair, this has to do with inadequate disclosure of significant investments and disinvestments. So the auditors noted that Controller recognized disinvestments in public institutions amounting to ten billion, two hundred and ninety-six million, two hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and fifty-nine Ghana cedis. And new investments totally nineteen billion, two hundred and forty-seven million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four as presented in schedule four. I would want the Controller to run the committee through the processes involved in recognizing investments and disinvestment and also the role of independent valuers, internal audit and external auditors.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director for National Accounts will handle this one.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. First, the process of handling or accounting for investment and disinvestment. Well, investment in its simple terms, when these entities put money somewhere expecting to get something out of it is the investment. So if within the reporting period, they've done something new is an addition, as indicated by the auditors. And if they decide to withdraw or, how do we call it? End the investment by taking back their money is a disinvestment. So I refer you to page four hundred and fifty-five of the report. That's where you find those details. Now, what auditors are raising again is a standard, is a requirement by the Ipsas. And let me indicate that, Controller, we are not directly involved in doing this investment and disinvestment. What we do is to aggregate what the entities have done. So sometimes it becomes very difficult to know specific reasoning, timing behind this investment at accounting stage. But what we want to do is to really get these entities to know this Ipsas requirement as raised by auditors that in their books, it should provide adequate disclosure to clarify what is accounting for additional investment in their books and what is accounting for disinvestment in their books. So when we are doing consolidation, to the extent possible, we can give a summary, a highlight as a matter of disclosure on this. This is what we've done and auditors are raising it and we thought it's appropriate. But one challenge and one other thing we'd like to draw audit and the committee's attention is that the national account, the whole of government account is a consolidated account. And it's not every information that we can put in. And if you go to page, schedule four, page four, five, five, we are talking about three hundred entities. So is it a case that each of the entities we have consolidated, we have to explain the purpose, the nature, the transaction, asset involved, date, amount, and method of acquisition, financial impact, gains, losses, valuation, any ongoing commitment, risk and benefit, alignment with government policy and strategic objectives? We are just wondering how we will be able to capture all these things in the national account. Already, these documents.
I would want to come in here.
Thank you.
This is a consolidated account.
That's correct.
And Ipsas is clear on disclosures. So irrespective of the number of covered entities, there is no excuse. So please, if it will take three booklets, three booklet to get these disclosures done, I think you should follow that. Yes, and we are here to peruse whatever documentation you provide. So for us, that is no excuse. The auditors recommended that you should enhance instructions to reporting entities. What have you done about it so far?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we have really developed a comprehensive manual templates and tools to guide all covered entities. And that has been acknowledged by the auditors. I humbly refer you to page twelve of the Audit General's reports. And yes, page twelve of the Audit General's reports, compliance with international public accounting standards. And I humbly read paragraph sixty-two. The Controller and Accountant General adopted the International Public Sector Accounting Standards across in the preparation of the twenty twenty four whole of government account. The Controller and Accountant General developed and listed tools to enhance compliance with the Ipsas. With Ipsas, the accrual basis of accounting and reporting at the national and entity level for use by covered entities. So the tools have been mentioned, accruals, reporting template, Ipsas accruals, accounting policy, Ipsas compliance, charter account, if last, Ipsas compliance checklist, training manual and asset release. This was, this is the statement. This was to achieve transparency, accountability, and fair presentation of the whole of government account. And this is the statement from the Audit General. I must commend the Controller and Accountant General and his team for this achievement. So this has been done. What is needed is the entities to utilize them and we are helping them. They need a lot of training to be able to utilize it. Thank you very much.
How would you ensure that going forward, now you have provided all the things that you have done, but in terms of evidence, do we have evidence that these covered entities have received these instructions? Because you would say it is another thing, them receiving these instructions. So do we have evidence to support that all covered entities have been given these instructions as to how to make disclosures going forward? So we do not get into these problems.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Yes, we have evidence. These documents were launched at twenty twenty four Annual Conference of Control and Accountant General. And as I speak, they are all on the Controller's website for all entities to download and use. We've also administered training for over one thousand two hundred public sector accountants. We have the list of all the trainees available and their entities. We can make it available if requested. Thank you.
Since we have the auditors here, auditors, are you satisfied with these explanations?
Honorable Chair, yes, we are satisfied with the explanation given.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Controller. You are discharged. Hold on, please.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairperson, I need two more minutes to ask.
The former Minister for Finance.
Minister of State at the Ministry of Finance.
Yes, she wants to ask you questions when she was there.
I'm looking at the actual accounts on page forty-three and I see biological assets. And you're saying it includes agricultural bits. I just want to find out, how do you assess biological assets? The amount I see there is, to me, a bit on the low side, based on the definition you gave. The note is fifty-five B, but the actual is forty-three, page forty-three on the accounts.
Yes, thank you very much, Honorable Chair. This is another benefit of Ipsas. Biological assets technically are those assets of natural character, animals we have and and those things that we are holding that are biological in nature and they are not being held for the intention of selling them. When you have a farm, when you have cows and pigs in the farm, if they are not there for resale, they are there to produce, like University of Ghana having a farm. These are biological assets. We have to find a way of valuing them and accounting for them in our balance sheets. It's a highly technical area we are looking at now. So it's good you've you've spotted this, Honorable Chair. We are engaging Minister of Agri and identifying institutions that have any engagements in the form of Agri or related matters. Then we find a very suitable way of identifying this and valuing them. There are some technical complications, but Ipsas, it's a requirement of Ipsas and we have to work to achieve it. The figure you've seen here is an indication that we have started something. So we'll build our needs in the subsequent account, hopefully. Thank you.
Also, I looked at page, is it five eight eight, the grants base. And for certain countries that I know, they are usual development partners who in one way or the other. one way or the other bringing something, I, I don't see any figure there. I, I just want to find out from you why it is so.
Yes, that's true. Page five eight eight, the grand shadow, we did not have any inflow from this development partners for twenty twenty-four. And this, we collated this data from Minister of Finance, the entities and our Public Debt and Investment Directorate. Once there is no figure here, we still have them in our books, but within the reporting year, we did not receive any inflow from them. That's be the reason.
That, that's, that's not possible for, for Japan, for Germany, for France, for Netherlands.
Yes.
So Ministry of Finance, maybe the, the right division should collaborate with the Controller and Accountant General and help us get input for some of these grants because I know that these countries in one way or the other contributes something. It can't be nil. I know we, we are in the process of making sure we implement fully the IPSAS. But we should also take steps to ensure that any entity that is supposed to give you the right information does that. So that at the end of it, you give us a very comprehensive view of government assets and liabilities. And then finally, last week, Friday, we met Ghana Education Service, Ministry of Education. And consistently, consistently, every district that, that was cited for one infraction or the other had to do with overpayment and on-end salaries. And there was a third one. And payment of responsibility, responsibility allowance to those not deserving of them. And for some of the districts, they maintained that they sent letters to Controller and Accountant General to halt these payments. Some said they have done that for a year. Others said they had done that for some months and Controller and Accountant General has still not been able, has not stopped these payments. Controller, we want to find out from you that clearly if there's evidence to that effect that they have actually written to your end, they have done everything that they need to do and your people, as in Controller, has not done the needful. We will speak to the Auditor General and leadership and apply the necessary sanctions because it is becoming too many. Some genuinely tell you, we sent the letters, we have proof, we have done this, we have done that. On Friday, it, it, it wasn't a pleasant situation at all. Consistently, we had more than, more than fifty districts being cited for the same issue. Yes.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, in the evening, I, I watched a bit of it on YouTube and that was around six P M. And I even sent a message to the Director General, Professor Davis, on the same issue. And that very evening, I called Mr. Mark Iro that I wanted a copy of the audit report. And he has promised that this week I will get it. My issue is, we shouldn't just end at recovery because realize that we were happy when they said recovered and then we take, recovered and we take, we should go beyond recovery. Who actually did it? If it is Controller, the input. So the audit report will definitely indicate the recipients and their staff ID. If, that should be in the audit report. So I want that report. We are working on collaboration with other security agencies, O S P. Because if somebody did it definitely, we are using an oracle system, there's an audit trail. We can go through into the system and then know, identify who actually on that particular day processed the allowances. It's something very easy that we can do. So what I'm saying is that once we get that, we suggest extra patience and then definitely with investigation, who actually those comparable who actually be able to book. Because it's not a comfortable, comfortable thing for me as well because payroll issues has become something that almost every day I hear those issues. But on the issue of they written to us, Madam Chair, the processes that the letters go through, they don't come direct to Controller. They write even from the district, it's go to the region, it comes to headquarters before it comes to Controller. So maybe we'll also have to investigate to find out that did the letters actually get to Controller? There are situations where they just to write, it comes to the head office or even the region for about six months. So we also need to, that is, we want to meet G E S and then Ghana Health Service to look at our operations and their operations as well. And I remember I said this, we have a client service charter. We can revisit that and then agree on timelines. If there's a letter from a district to a region, how long should we be in the region before it comes to the head office? We should look at that. And now people keep on saying, we send the letter to Controller, Controller, and for one year, we haven't received the letter. And then you go to the district or region and you realize that the letter is still there. So we collaborate with them and then they'll give us timelines and this issue will resolve. But for the audit report, I have request for it and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much Controller, but I think that in order to expedite some of these things, you should give them, in this day of modern technology, give them two or three emails that once they send to, from the district to the region, the region should, so that there will be a paper trail. Sending emails is faster and more efficient than writing letters. And if you engage the heads of institutions that moving forward, this is how you want to go about it, in addition to the, the letters coming to you, it will go a long way to solve some of these problems.
Madam Chair, thank you. It's one of the issues we want to discuss. What we want to do is that if it had to do with inputting, then we'll still expect that the hard copies will go through the region to the head office and then come to us. But if you had to do with stoppage, then of course, as you are saying, we can even start with the email. So once we receive the email-
But Controller, in sending the email, they need to attach the relevant document.
Yes, they will attach the relevant document.
So if they attach the relevant document, it's the same thing there.
It is the same thing, but as I said, if it had to do with inputting-
Yes.
A, a new allowance or a new entrant, for that, it's still has to go through that process. But for us to protect the public purse, what I'm saying that if we had to do with a stoppage of unwarranted allowance, then of course, the email with the relevant documents, when it comes to us, we can stop the salary or whatever it is whilst waiting for the original from the head office. So that we don't continue to pay on-end salaries to the recipient. That's what I'm saying. So-
Then finally, why is it that when sometimes mistakenly, somebody's name is taken off their payroll, it takes forever? Controller, it takes forever for the person to be put back on it. Sometimes it's a genuine mistake from the validators. You know, and sometimes too, it is a way of some of the heads showing teachers where the power lies. And it's very, very painful. Since yesterday, since Friday, we've had a lot of these reports. It's very painful that genuinely, I mean, your name is taken off the, the payroll for one reason or the other, you have to go to Controller, sometimes eight good months and you still haven't been reinstated. Meanwhile, you are there working and for one reason or the other, you are being validated. How do we cure this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you had to do with the validators, of course, they validate, they are in the district, they are in their offices and they will determine that this amount of people deserve to be paid. So if of one reason or the other, they don't validate you, then it's the same process, it's the same validators and institutions that have to go through the process to validate you for us to pay you. We cannot as Controller pay you if the validators haven't validated you. So these are some of the challenges that we will engage-
When they bring proof to you that it was wrongly done and so you have to reinstate the person, that's, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, there are some people who vacate posts and they deserve to be taken off. But those who for one reason or the other are genuinely taken off, the validators will tell you they have done the right thing, they have sent the documentation and everything to Controller. Sometimes they even show you evidence that this is what they have done. And the beneficiaries come all the way from the various places to come and sit in Controller and see, who do I know to help me do this, help me do that? So at these, let's not just explain it away. There are genuine reasons and genuine concerns. I think maybe you should have a desk dedicated specifically for these things because sometimes when you hear their stories, Controller, it's, it's not too good.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we have a desk, we have a client service who deals with the payroll issues. And I think I remember I mentioned this somewhere that we, they, they come direct to the client service and then their issues are resolved, those kind of issues. The issue is that some of them, some of the issues could have even been resolved at a district level, but you hardly, we don't understand why people still want to see somebody to resolve their issues for them. We think they are genuine concerns, you've gone through the process and they will be resolved. We'll see to that. But please, I want the Director of Payroll is here and I wanted to also practically tell us what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Regarding the issue of responsibility allowance, normally when an officer of an institution is giving additional responsibility, is the institution that need to go through the normal processes to get that done? Now, for example, if in a school, a teacher is given additional responsibility of guidance and counseling coordinator, it is the institution that need to go through the processes for approval. And they are the ones, I mean, the personnel processing sections, they are required to capture this data on the payroll system. For example, if the officer was Assistant Director One, nineteen, with the responsibility, it would be Assistant Director Nineteen H if it was Nineteen L. So you don't find it as a line item on the pay slip. It's just the change in job. So it's the institution that is supposed to capture this data on the payroll system and then inform Controller. When again, that responsibility is taken away from that officer, is the institution again that is required to also change the job again to reflect the current job of the officer. Until that is done by the institution at the personnel processing section level, Controller cannot do anything about it. We do not actually capture data regarding these issues.
In my submission, I said that once they identify and they claim, they bring it to Controller, they don't act on it. So I'm not asking Controller to go to the institution and check, but they are saying that once they are normally is seen, they, they write letters to Controller and they expect Controller to do the needful. That was what they said on Friday.
Yeah.
So my issue is, why does it take so long? And the Controller and Accountant General explained that sometimes the processes through which these letters are brought to the attention of Controller is the issue. And so we mentioned the fact that we should, we should come up with some emails or some quickened way of addressing these things. So I, I, I get, I get that very well. But my issue is, as soon as it is brought to your attention, do the needful to make sure these names are off or those who are receiving allowances that they are not supposed to receive, I mean, go off. That's, that's, that's all I, 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 I want to put across.
Honorable, the example I gave is that if they do not take action at their own level and they bring the letters alone, we cannot do anything about it. That is just the message I was trying to carry for you. But as soon as the-
Action without, they can't write a letter without taking action. Nobody does that.
You know, sometimes the letters can come to us without them taking action at their level. So most of the time, we have to refer these documents back to their institutions to take action on them.
So we asked that you check these things. The most important thing is that people are paid for what they have worked for. Those who are not supposed to earn certain allowances shouldn't be put on those ones. So work with Ghana Education Service and the Ministry of Education to see how best we can rectify this. That's all we are saying, nothing more, nothing less.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you. But I just want to add that the, we need cooperation from the general public because sometimes the investigators find it very difficult to get to the bottom of it because people are not ready to, to cooperate. So if you're a teacher and someone has taken money from you, you ask who, who has taken money from you? And they find it very difficult to come out, no, just let us know. Let, let us, we should cooperate. What's the information that we are getting from the investigators? That this are, sometimes they start investigation and guess somewhere, they get stuck because they are not forthcoming with, with, with information for them to, to actually arrest the copies. So please, if you're a teacher and someone has taken money from you, we are not going to mention your name. You just come out. We have a way of doing it, just so that we know those who are involved, it is Controller staff, we will not show that person.
Controller.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you very much. What we'll do is, on some of our, our settings, we'll invite you to come and sit down and hear for yourself what is going on. And then you try to help us resolve these issues. When you have one institution that has on end in, uh, income of two hundred and seventy thousand, one institution, then you ask yourself, what is going on? And that's what the country is watching. They are watching you and I live.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, respectfully.
But Controller, you said they should tell you, they should come out. How do they do that? I mean, we are on national television. How do they come to you? There should be a means, there should be a system where, let's say, a telephone line or an email where they are sending you an email. I mean, let, let the public know, we are live on T V. We are coming out by next week, all the regions who come, who advertise their telephone numbers and then the head office as well, who do that and then the emails as well. We've started the process. So all the existing regions who advertise in their deals for every, if you have issues, you don't even have to travel to Accra, just call the number. If you are the eastern region, you go to the regional directors' office there and they will have an alert. If they cannot, then they will escalate you to the head office. So we advertise the telephone numbers for all the existing regions. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you and to say that the genuine concerns of people who wait several months before being put back on the payroll is something that will be looked at. It is some reports that we have been made aware of. And I was, I want to add also that we've come across some allegations of payroll-related fraud issues that we have asked the investigation agencies to investigate. Fortunately, because these things are done on the system, it is even possible for us to see who activated somebody, who deactivated the person and all that. There was one that went viral recently about someone who complained that, I think a teacher or so, name was taken off the payroll, somebody assisted him to get it on and the person was demanding a lot of money from, from him. Because he did not pay, they went ahead and removed his name from the payroll. We have taken serious view of this and it is being investigated. Fortunately, Controller knows the person in the Controller office who activated, who deactivated, but a lot more information need to come out for us to know what really went on and for the appropriate punishment to be meted out. And so the Finance Minister takes serious views to some of these things and is asked that we have an in-depth investigation into it. We will apprise the general public of whatever the outcome is. And as Controller said, the public should be free to come forth with any information that will help us nip this trend in the bud. But also, very, very important thing for us to realize is that before anybody is paid from any of, from G E S, from Ghana Health Service, anywhere that is on the payroll, somebody has to validate that there is this person in the V R J H S number one in Akosombo who is a teacher and me, the head of the institution or whoever, am validating that the person has worked and must be paid. We are going to the extent of identifying validators and bringing them to book if they validate- If they validate people who have not worked for, for, for a particular month. And so, uh, we, we must all be on, on guard and realize that everybody has a responsibility to protect the integrity of our payroll. Because the system where we clean the payroll and only for ghosts to re-enter the payroll and all that, I, I think must come to an end. And so, uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I think Controller is here. They must take this, um, as an admonition for them to go and work efficiently to make sure that genuine people who for one reason or the other find their names off the payroll are brought on within the shortest possible time. Uh, I know that they will want to be cautious in putting people back on the payroll, but six months, eight months cannot be an acceptable timeframe. And so it is something that I think we need to take in good faith and all work together to, to clean. Thank you.
Uh, Minister, one minute. And the last thing has to do with the banks who received these monies. You know, sometimes when their attention are brought to, uh, some of these wrongful payments, they refuse to send it back. Last week, Friday, we had one from a rural bank, and the attention had been drawn to the fact that it was a wrongful payment, and yet still they were refusing, uh, to do the needful. So, um, one of our colleagues here suggested that they speak to the Apex A R P. But since these banks are under you and the Ministry of Finance, who ask that, um, you collaborate with them and that once a notice is brought to their attention concerning this from a formal, in a formal way, they need to do the needful. Because you can't have public funds sitting, government money sitting in your account, even when your attention has been drawn to the fact that these are monies that should go back to government coffees. So, um, just, um, to let you know of what happened on Friday and how Ministry of Finance can assist us in this regard. Thank you.
Uh, Controller, you, um, we have questions to ask your central region and western region office. Uh, is, do you have somebody here to answer those questions? Or you are going to sit there and answer them?
One, I, one observation.
Uh, two of them.
No. Are they two?
Okay, uh, Honorable, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so, uh, they were even asking me to humbly ask that you take that before they leave so they don't have to come back. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, just sorry to take you back a bit. Um, please allow me to, um, correct, well, straighten some record. Uh, Madam Chair made an observation of grant schedule, uh, on page five eight eight of the report. I got a bit alarmed that we saw zero zero, and that's, that's not a good incentive. However, if you go back a bit to page five eight six, the grant schedule has actually been categorized into two categories. Grant in cash and grant in kind. So the grant in cash actually has some figures from the D P S and then, and other organizations. And it is the grant in kind.
Okay.
Component that we are seeing zero zero recorded.
Okay.
So that our development partners, uh, do not see us as not recognizing their grants. So the grant in cash is actually from page five eight six. And so you see African Development Bank has about hundred and twenty million, and the others, the others are listed. It is when you come to the grant in kind, in kind that we don't have, um, figures. Okay, I thank you very much.
Very much.
Okay, Controller, now we'll go to, uh, paragraph one eighty-six of the ministries, departments and other agencies. And it's our untransferred on-end salaries by banks. Uh, Honorable, uh, Naseej will take that one.
This one, eight six.
This is the evidence, we have, we have two them from pensions. So we use the grant, uh, committed pension to take off some, one person paid his. The other one, we have used a committed pension to take it off.
Oh, okay, so this one?
Yes.
Everything has been repaid. Okay. How many were there, two people? But one person, we, we use what, his committed pension?
Committed pension, one person paid it. Two, they raised, we used committed pension.
Okay.
Deducted from their committed pension.
Pension, okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Controller, um, today this is Aguna West District, Central Region. On, untransferred on-end salaries by the banks totaling three oh eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven Ghana cedis. And the auditors noted that several letters were written by Controller and Accountant General between April twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-three, instructing banks to transfer total on-end amount of three zero eight thousand, eight two seven point three eight from the pensioners' individual accounts to government chest. Um, these, these individuals were Imano Otabel, David Kabinada Akun, Frederick Hawi, and Vincent K Uthu. The auditors recommended that the regional head of Controller and Accountant General should employ the use of courts to court orders to recover the said amount with interest at a prevailing Bank of Ghana rate. Controller, I want to find out from you, um, the steps taken so far and whether the said amount that belongs to all of us has been returned to chest. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. They've all been recovered, and we have the evidence here to show.
Auditors, please, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, we are yet to be updated with the evidence that they have.
Controller, there, please, can you turn that in the evidence?
Yes, okay.
Chairman, please, the said amount has been recovered, so they've turned it in the evidence. Thank you.
Chair, Chairman, I, I, I don't know if the auditors will confirm, but their recommendation, they are yet to, have you confirmed? Their recommendation is that it should be recovered, recovered with interest. So I'm even interested to know whether it was recovered with interest or just the amount.
The, the auditors said that they are yet to get a confirmation from Controller. So probably maybe, um, Controller, you heard what your boss just said?
Yes.
So please ensure that before it gets to the auditors, there has to be interest attached to whatever you are giving to the state.
Okay, thank you.
It's a fair, uh, uh, instruction from your boss, not us.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we, you take it.
Honorable, yes, one ninety to, one ninety three.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and, um, the infraction is purchases of items for non-existent departments. And the auditors in the review of your books, uh, came across, uh, a purchase, uh, purchases made to the tune of nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one for the supply of office consumables on behalf of the Department of Rural Housing and also parks and gardens. However, by, uh, one Mister Richmond Ansong and Prince Nana Ade, the accountants and the director of budget of the division of R C C. Uh, but however, it was realized that these offices, uh, these departments do not have designated offices physically in existence in the region. And, uh, this was enough. And so the auditors recommended that you cannot purchase items for a non-existent office. And for that matter, the Mister Richard Ansong and Prince Nana Ade should refund the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred, uh, five hundred and ninety-one. So the, the regional director of Controller was mandated to recover this amount from them and also to ensure that the two officers are sanctioned per section ninety-six of the P F M Act. Uh, Controller, can you tell us the status of this recommendation of the General?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, it's about the non-existence of the office. I, I also have a document here proving that a staff was seconded from R C C to the Department of Rural Housing. So that is why I also, I'm a bit challenged that if R C C has seconded an officer to the Department of Rural Housing, why the auditors are also saying that it's a non-existent department? There is a letter here to that effect written by the R C C anyway. But, uh, the monies have so far been recovered. But another issue that I have with the auditors' recommendation was that the, my information was that the item, they said the items were not delivered, and then there is an S R A that I've cited that showed that the S R A was signed by the storekeeper initially, which were not signed by the internal auditor. So then, if that is true, why then say that the head of the department and the accountant should be held responsible and who be asked to refund the money? Because the storekeeper, if it is true that the items were not delivered, then I think the storekeeper should also be held responsible. Because the S R A is a document that shows that you sign to indicate that the items have been delivered in the right quantity and in the right specification. So if the storekeeper signed and then internal auditor did not sign, then there is a problem. So they have to refund. My issue is that then the storekeeper as well should also be asked to be part of it. That is an issue that we want to discuss with the auditors in the region and then find out. But so far, the two gentlemen have refunded money to the state, and there's evidence here to show to that.
Controller, you know, some of these things, I, I, I don't think you are being fair to the auditors. They come to the entity. If they had seen all those documentation, I don't think they would have this in their reports. So i- i- it is not the fault of the auditors that, oh, they were there, uh, you've seen, you have, you've identified this, you identified that. Ask the people there whether during the exit conference, they showed all those documents to the auditors. If they had done it, I don't think the auditors would have it here. And so, um, let's work with them to make sure we clear this.
No, Madam Chair, my issue were, there are two issues. The first issue were the fact that they said there was a non-existent department of rural housing in the region. But I've also cited a letter from R C C seconding our staff to the department. That's why I was saying that we need to find out from them. If there's a letter from R C C seconding our staff-
Maybe at that time, your staff did not show proof of this.
Of this?
Yes.
Then, and my second issue about the fact that-
So, um, no, you, you, you lost that when the auditors were at your end, you should have explained all these things.
This didn't happen in the western, no. So I got this information from my office.
I don't mean you in particular, but Controller and Accountant General in your capacity. Because the auditors came there, they sat with you. And so if for one reason or the other you have found documentation, the best thing to do is give it to the auditors, let them clear you, and then we close this infraction and we move on. But we, we won't come and allow you to lecture the auditors on what to do and what not to do, respectfully.
But auditors, can you confirm or otherwise what the Controller and Accountant General is saying?
Honorable Chair, we are yet to be updated with the recovery as he has indicated.
Controller, up to now, the auditors don't have the information you have.
I even have, they sent it to me even on WhatsApp because I called the regional director to make sure that it is done. And I gave a hard copy to be given today. Yes.
But, but Controller, excuse me.
Yeah.
You are not the auditor. The auditors were the ones who cited them.
Yeah.
So if they have that information, they should share with the auditors. Up to now, the auditors don't have copies of it.
I'm saying that I made sure that the refund was affected, and then I asked the regional director to send me a copy of the pay in slip. So they sent it to me on my WhatsApp last week, and then I gave it to, forwarded to our staff that he should run a copy and then give it to the auditors. So I made sure that it was done, and I have it here, yes.
So it goes to prove that your staff did not follow through it. That's what it is. Uh, if you have information.
Yeah.
Let's make sure that you-
Oh, okay, my, my, my information, it was sent to the original auditor.
All right.
But I have it here.
Auditors, auditors will follow up.
Okay.
On it. Okay, Controller, you are discharged.
Thank you.
Now let's call Ministry of, uh, Finance. And all those who are going to answer questions, please stand up and then let them, um, swear you in if you haven't been sworn in yet. Hello, Ministry of Finance, please, get ready and then let's swear you in, please. Who is the chief director? Those to be sworn in, please stand up, let's swear you in. We have a long list today.
I.
I, Isaac Frekua.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this subcommittee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Good morning, um, committee members. My name is Jacob Ahaji, Director of Internal Audit, Ministry of Finance.
Good morning, Chair. Frekua Isaac is my name, um, Director of Budget, Ministry of Finance.
Good morning, Chair. Ifoa Brown Poobi, Director of Account, Director of Finance. Thank you.
All right, your infraction is on paragraph one sixty-one. And, uh, Honorable Abner Osayasa will take care of that one.
Thank you very much, Ministry of Finance. Ministry of Finance, this is on the Ganeshi Odess on the Ministry of Finance's bank accounts. Can you brief us on the updates? And, um, we can take it up from there, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Ministry of Finance, as we know, acts as an M D and a central, um, agency. And because of, um, the role we play in releasing of judgment funds, more often than not, when a judgment is given, um, in the court, our account is gan- more often than not, when a judgment is given, um, in the court, our account is Ghanaian. Most of the Ghanaian, eh, um, notices that we receive are not for Ministry of Finance. Some are land compensation, most of them are land compensation. And we've been suffering for this, um, judgment being placed on our a- account for a, a while. We've tried to do something about it, but then the court, the court gives a judgment and the bank notifies us. And honestly, it's, 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 eh, eh, it's, it's very difficult for Ministry of Finance as an MDA. Because you'll be there and you've processed things, it goes through, um, the processes, gets to, um, CAGD and they release our funds for us only to be told that your money is, there's a Ghanaian on it and so you cannot do any payment. And it's been very hard. And so the auditors, um, when it happens like that, they're immediately, you have to use an account that is there to receive funds, to pay the suppliers, subsequent funds. And so they, we've been co-mingling like they said, and there is nothing for now we can do. So the Ghanaian, um, placement on our account sees this. Thank you.
Um, the Auditor General advised that, uh, uh, they advised Bank of Ghana to also desist from doing that. But it looks like for Bank of Ghana, they receive court orders and then they are supposed to, uh, implement these court orders. I think on this particular situation, we should work with the Attorney General to see how best we can address some of these things. Because as far as I know, every ministry, department or agency has, um, its own budgets that they should rely on for, um, some of these things. Unless, well, sometimes there's a line item at Ministry of Finance that takes care of, uh, some of these judgment debts. And so, um, they think that once, uh, they have, um, payments of a judgment debt in their favor, they should attach Ministry of Finance's account. So, Honorable Minister, um, please, if we can work together with the AG's department and Bank of Ghana and to, to, to address this situation, because it can be very, very embarrassing sometimes, especially when you know you have processed and some payments are due, you have to go ahead and pay only for you to, um, be told that your account has been garnished by, uh, the courts because of one thing or the other that is not directly related to Ministry of Finance.
Thank you, Minister. Uh, thank you, Chairman.
What have you done about this hundred and fifty million Ghana cities? Have we resolved that issue or the money is gone?
Mr. Chairman, I would want to speak about what, uh, Chairman, uh, Abner said. In fact, this is worrying because in all these cases, Ministry of Finance is not directly involved. Uh, somebody at the road ministry awards a road contract and they are not able to pay. And so the contractor takes government to court. And at the end of the day, the Ministry of Finance account is garnished because of a judgment that, uh, because of the, the, the transaction. It is important that we have a legal framework that will protect Ministry of Finance uh, from these rampant, uh, court actions that is preventing us from operating our accounts. Um, as she advised, we are engaging the Attorney General's department and also Bank of Ghana and even the, uh, Acting Chief Justice, uh, would also be helpful in this for us to understand the whole process and see how these issues can be resolved. But ultimately, um, as a government, we need to plan our finances in a way that commitment on the state is, is, is contained so that we reduce the number of, uh, court actions and judgment debts that has been slapped on us frequently. And so this is a worrying trend and we are engaging all the relevant stakeholders to see how we can resolve this.
Uh, the next paragraph is on, uh, paragraph one seventy-one. And, uh, Honorable Davi Supokwansa would handle that.
Thank you, um, Minister. Section seven of the PFME Act, uh, PFME places a duty on the principal spending officers to ensure that, um, there is regularity and proper use of public funds. Um, the auditors cite your ministry in committing five point three million Ghana cities of taxpayers' money to rent an office accommodation for MIDA. And we know that MIDA is an entity that do not generate revenue, but it depends entirely on government's invasion. Um, in fact, the Auditor General describes this rent as expensive and unsustainable and as recommended that you re- you renegotiate. First, I want to find out what you have done about this, um, infraction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the decision has been taken by the ministry not to renew the, the, the tenancy agreement and to look for an alternative accommodation, um, which, um, Ministry of Works and Housing, we are in collaboration with Works and Housing to find a suitable accommodation which will not be a drain on the, the ministry. Thank you.
So, um, the auditors knows that as of December twenty twenty-three, your ministry had paid, um, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, they said, um, facility managers. And, um, you have some eleven months' rent covering, uh, from February to December twenty twenty-four outstanding. Have you been able to pay, uh, this money to the company?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we have not paid that to, to the company.
All right, um, so what, what, what steps are you taking to ensure that, I mean, it doesn't become, um, a judgment debt on the state?
Okay, thank you once again. Um, I think, uh, part of the arrangement was, uh, security deposits, which was in the contract. So a deposit was placed with the, um, owners of the property. So the decision has been made to convert that, uh, deposit to part of the, um, the, the payment.
I mean, we are talking about, um, public funds, uh, debts that hang, um, on our necks that continue to find itself in our books. Um, I mean, you, you, you seem, just let us know if you are not properly briefed on this subject. Other than that, let me know, out of this eleven months, um, if there are securities and that you have ten, you are, you are using that to pay, how much of that have you, have you paid and how much is owed to the state? So that the auditors can follow up and confirm. I mean, so that it does not appear in the audit, audit report next year. So please be specific. If you need more time, we are, we are able to give you.
Right, so Madam Chair, we'll serve you with the details. Yeah, thank you.
Meaning that you are not, you are not fully briefed on the subject?
I am, um, but in, in relation to the question you ask of how much of it that we are yet to pay and all that.
Did you read the auditor's report?
Yes, please.
You, you, you saw the eleven months' old company?
Yes.
And you did not find out whether or not you've been able to pay? And if you have done so, how much of that you've cleared?
Right, so, um, Madam Chair, my, uh, the Director of Finance is here. I want to refer to her in respect of that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, with regards to this one, I'll have to come back and, and we'll finish the, um, committee with what has been paid so far.
Madam, I mean, you represent the Ministry of Finance. I mean, that is an apex when it comes to financial accountability and issues surrounding finance. This, this audit report has been in the system for some time. I mean, we wrote to you to come and answer to this report. And, uh, you are now demanding for more time. Uh, we work with the calendar and I, I feel that it's, um, it's not, it's not, um, too pleasant to hear-
Mr. Chairman.
-this story is coming from you.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, this issue was brought to our attention. And, uh, we took a decision that the outstanding payment is part of the larger areas that we are, uh, considering to pay. And so we haven't taken specific decision, uh, with regards to payment schedule for the areas. It's part of the whole government areas that we are scheduling to pay. But what we have done is that we have taken a firm decision to abrogate the contract, to discontinue the rent arrangement because we agree with the auditors that it is exorbitant. And so the rent agreement has been terminated and we are making alternative arrangements with the Public Works, uh, uh, Department to look for, uh, a, a cheaper, uh, accom- office accommodation for, for the entity. And so that is what has been done. But we can furnish you with detailed arrangements as to how we will clear the outstanding debt that, that is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister, for this assurance. Um, yeah, only to inform you that last week, YEA was here and we had a similar, uh, uh, situation where they had to pay some huge sums, even when they are, they were using, uh, facilities that belong to government. So probably maybe you need to, from where you sit, um, give some instructions to, um, MDA so that, I mean, they do not commit the state, uh, into renting very expensive apartments and offices for their use. I, I, I think that it will help. It should not, it should not just be limited to what you, you do at the Ministry of Finance, but it should be a government policy so that we look at, uh, these things and, uh, correct these anomalies in the system. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think from the minister's response to the second part of, uh, Honorable PK's question, I want, I think per the auditor's recommendation, with a staff strength of just twenty, it will be more prudent for the ministry to procure an outright accommodation for MIDA. I looked at it again and I realized that, uh, as part of the agreement between the ministry and MIDA, they were supposed to be in charge of the implementation of the Economic Enclave Project. What is the current situation? Is it that MIDA will continue to oversee the Ghana case of Batampa? Or there is a different program for MIDA going forward? Because if there is no sustainable project for them to manage, then there is no need to keep them. So we should know what plans government has for MIDA and what MIDA will be doing going forward.
Thank you, Chairman. I would, uh, want to apprise the committee on government plans about MIDA at the appropriate time. Thank you.
All right. We'll, we'll be waiting on the Honorable Minister. The next one is award of contract without entity tender committee. And we are talking about one point three million Ghana cities. The recommendation was for the Chief Director should initiate a process of implementing the provision under section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act as amended uh, for the implementation of the sanctions against officers whose actions occasioned that anomaly. Have you done that?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. So, um, this issue occurred as a result of, um, I mean, the ministry using an inappropriate procurement method. So, um, overall, the ministry has been adhering strictly to, um, relevant requirements of the Public Procurement Act. So I would say this one was one of the issues that-
That wasn't the question. The Chief Director is supposed to initiate the process of implementing the provision. Do you know the, uh, section ninety-two of the Public Procurement Act?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm aware of it.
What is it?
It provides for sanction-
Sanctions.
-against public officers for non-adherence to the public procurement.
Have you done it? So- Okay, if you haven't done it, this is what we will do. We are, uh, recommending you to the Attorney General for prosecution on that one. Simple. When it comes to procurement, we are not going to mess with it. You know it and I know it. Let's move on. The next one is on paragraph one eighty-two. And that is for Ghana's statistical service, Central Region, Cape Coast. Ghana's statistical service, are you here?
Madam Chair, Ghana's statistical service is not here, but they have provided evidence of recovery of the amount. So in the invite given, statistical service was not stated.
Say, you, you can't say that. If you look at the reports and you claim you looked at the reports, you can't tell us they were not invited. Every time Ministry of Finance is invited, they come with all their agents. You know very well. So don't use that as an excuse to say that, uh, they were not asked to come. But the, what did the report say? You had copies of the reports. The report is on, is online on Audit Services', uh, um, website. So if they did not come, how did they provide, um, the answers to you? If they were not invited, why then did you accept their answers to bring to public accounts? See, let's not play tricks on public accounts, you understand? If for one reason they haven't been here, they, they, um, they couldn't come, just explain. But don't tell us that the invite did not include them. When you know very well that Ministry of Finance has statistical service under, uh, under its purview.
Mr. Chairman, uh, unfortunately, they are not here, but according to him, uh, he has their response. So what will be the pleasure of leadership? Will it be for him to respond to it or you want them physically present?
But if they were not invited, how did he get the response from them?
Mr. Chairman, uh, respectfully, we want to apologize for the statement that they were not invited. Uh, he made that statement because he didn't see their name on it. But as Chairman said, they are an agency under the Ministry of Finance. And once they have been cited, uh, it stands that they should be here to respond to their queries. Uh, but like I said, uh, the responses are here. We will take your guidance. If you would want them to come, we can get them to come. But if you want us to provide the, the response, we'll kindly do so. Thank you.
The recommendation was for the regional head should ensure that the accountant refund the unaccounted amount of six thousand four hundred and send paid into the Auditor General's recovery account with Bank of Ghana, uh, with Bank of Ghana, feeling which the regional head should pay. Has that money been collected?
Yes, ma- uh, Madam Chair, I have here a pay-in slip from, um, um, GCB and the beneficiary account is Auditor General's recovery account.
When was it paid?
With an amount of six thousand four hundred, paid on the twelfth of August twenty twenty-five.
Oh, today is, uh, twenty-fifth and they paid thirteen days ago.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Sir, what's your position again at the ministry?
Director of Internal Audit.
Oh, Director of Internal Audit. Goodness. Have you finished the Auditor Gen- uh, Auditor General with this information?
Um, um, Madam Chair, I understand, um, the Ghana statistical service was supposed to submit this to the audit, their auditors.
You have decided to take up their responsibility.
Not that I have decided to take up the, the responsibility. So I, I've just gone through the program outline here. As I indicated earlier, I did not see Ghana's statistical service here. So they indicated to us that they were not invited. And that, when you look at the program outline, Ghana's statistical service is not in there. It was on that basis that when they gave us the evidence indicating that they had paid, we, we collected it from them.
Have you given that, um, story about the payment to the auditors?
Um, so, I, I, as I said-
Sir, the question requires yes.
No, I have, I have not.
You have not?
Yes.
Since, um, Cape Coast, Central Region, eh, that was, um- Since Cape Coast, Central Region, that was Cape Coast, right?
So Madam Chair, as I'm saying, it is the responsibility of Ghana Statistical Service to hand the evidence over to their external audit.
Do you know, sir, if you allow us to ask the questions and for you to give us the answers, I think we will move forward. Do you know if they've given that information to the Auditor General?
That's the...
Chairman, respectfully, I think the confusion is in part because looking at your own program, you have listed Ministry of Finance and all the agencies that have infractions that are, and I'm sure they followed those programs. And so he will not be in the position to answer detailed questions on this. And so respectfully, if you would want us to get Statistical Service, because all the information he has is evidence that they have complied with the Auditor General's directives and that they have the paying slip that is showing the payment into the accounts, he may not be able to answer any detailed questions posed on Ghana Statistical Service. And so if you would want them to appear before you to get detailed responses, I think we will be happy to bring them. Thank you.
Since he cannot answer it, we will flag this one and they have to bring the Statistical Service over here now. Call them. If they were able to send you that, let them come. We have helicopters available to bring them. The next paragraph is paragraph one nine four. Honorable N S, any will take care of that one, please. Is G R A here?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, it looks like we are going very fast per the program we have, your own program. G R A is supposed to be here, but in the afternoon. So they are arriving now. They are way ahead of time, so we can take them since they are here.
Please, Clark, let's swear in G R A and let them take the seat. Clark, swear in G R A, please. We are still live. And Clark, can we swear in G R A?
Deputy Commissioner, Customs Operations, Ghana Revenue Authority.
Yes. Okay, G R A, since you are here, your infraction is on paragraph one nine four and it's a judgment date. And Honorable N S will take care of that, please.
Thank you, Chair. G R A, the auditors noted that through their examination of payment vouchers, the authority incurred a judgment totaling two million ninety-seven thousand Ghana cities. A further review of the judgment by the High Court, T E M A, dated seven March, which indicates that the authority suspended the licenses of three companies for alleged morfeasances committed by these companies without fair hearing. However, the authority failed to furnish the court with sufficient and appropriate evidence to justify that decision of suspending the licenses of these companies. Commissioner, what I want to find out is what processes does G R A undertake before suspending the license of any institution? First, what you do before suspension?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ogney will take that response.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the first initiative we undertake is to establish an infraction against any trader or importer. And once that is determined, we raise what we call a customs offense report in the... Currently, we use Integrated Customs Management System to raise a customs offense report. And then the importer is liable and has issued a demand notice where we request that the payment is effected. So that is the process that we go through.
Okay, thank you. In this particular circumstance, G R A failed to provide appropriate evidence to justify the suspension of these licenses at the court. Can you brief the committee on why you failed to provide evidence for these suspensions?
Mr. Chairman, we'd like to mention that we...
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, we've just been joined by the Commissioner General and because he may provide some responses, I don't know if you want him to swear.
Yes, please. He has to be sworn in. Welcome, Commissioner General.
And that he was working with the time on the program. That is why he is now coming. So he is technically not late. Thank you.
It's after twelve, so it's afternoon.
I, Anthony Questisapon, swear by the Almighty God...
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee...
That the evidence I shall give before this committee...
Touching the matter in issue...
Touching the matter in issue...
Shall be the truth...
Shall be the truth...
The whole truth...
The whole truth...
And nothing but the truth...
And nothing but the truth...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Since Commissioner has been sworn in already now, I want to find out why G R A failed to provide the evidence at the court.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to state that prior to the introduction of the Integrated Customs Management System, we were using the Ghana Customs Management System as a means of conducting customs activities. In the year twenty twenty, when the systems were changed and we migrated from the Integrated Customs Management System to the, from the Ghana Customs Management System to the Integrated Customs Management System, we had some challenges, very serious challenges with the migration of data from the old system to the new system. And when the matter in discussion was pending before the courts, the information that was needed for our lawyers to pursue further the case could not be made available because of the migration and from the G C net system to the Integrated Customs Management System, despite the fact that the Policy and Programs Unit responsible for the management of both systems made extended efforts to try and obtain that information. Unfortunately, it was without success. And so we could not obtain the data that was needed for the lawyers to pursue further the case.
Mr. Commissioner, I think I would want to stop you right there and move on to what has been done so far. Have you been able to recover the entire two million ninety-seven thousand as recommended by the auditors?
Thank you very much, Chairman. The current status is that the amount has not been recovered and the reason is that the authority has not been able to assign it to specific officers in view of the fact that the information that was the subject in question was, were not able to be retrieved or we couldn't have access to it during the period of migration from one system to the other.
Sir, this is very interesting. Whoever made that decision...
Were captured on the system that was in place. So there was very little opportunity for manual information available. And because the matter came a few years thereafter and the fact that the system, the data on the system had challenges with the migration, this is what created the difficulty to be able to specifically identify the details of the information that caused the suspension. Just to let the committee know that we've gone seriously into this matter, we've had difficulty in getting the information. But I do know that subsequent to this matter, the authority made reforms in terms of keeping data and having data ownership as far as doing these matters are concerned. So today, we have a more improved system that allows us to be able to avoid this situation now and to the future.
Mr. Commissioner, the recommendation was very clear and specific, that you recover this amount from the officers involved. Now your challenge is identifying which officers committed this infraction. So is it to say that you have committed in paying back this amount of two million? Or what do you want the committee to do at this point?
Thank you very much. So the point we are making is that the recommendation is to chart specific officers that were involved. At the moment, we have had difficulties, given the circumstances surrounding how this event occurred, to be able to identify the officers and assign them. And that's why we are reporting back to the committee, that we have had difficulties in actually identifying the officers, to be able to practically implement the recommendation.
Are we saying that those people who suspended their licenses are ghosts? Seriously, somebody made that decision.
I think to add to what Chairman just said, I know at the G R A, there are specific officers assigned to various institutions and companies and there are files that are open for companies. So once we go to the files of this institution, we should be able to identify which officers worked on it. So to tell the entire committee that you cannot identify the officers that are responsible to these three companies, it's quite strange. I don't know, even with system, there are system traces, audit trails, so you can go back and find out which officer initiated this and all that. We can go back to the developers and they should be able to help us in this. So Commissioner, I think that the committee deserves a better explanation. But Chair, we are in your hands, so...
Okay, the Minister wants to speak.
Chairman, we have discussed this issue extensively before appearing before your committee. And I took the position that you are taking currently. But the challenge they explained to us was that they still believe that the decision to suspend the licenses were taken correctly. The challenge they had was proving that in court. And it was in the process of defending G R A in court that they did not get the evidence that they needed at the time because of the migration of the data from one system to the other. And so the question is who to surcharge? Is it the person who, in their opinion, took the right decision to suspend licenses? Or the ones that could not get the information to prosecute the case in court? So that is where the difficulty was, that genuinely, it was the difficulty in proving the matter in court that led to the payment of the two million and not necessarily the decision to suspend the licenses of the companies. And so that is the difficulty we have now as to who to identify and ask to pay the money. Is it the one who could not provide the information in court or the one who suspended the license? And this is the genuine difficulty that they are presenting to us. And so that is what it is. Thank you.
Minister, I will leave this one in your hands for you to investigate further because paying two million Ghana cities like that is serious. So we'll flag it and give it to you and we hope that you give us further and better information within thirty days so that it will form part of our report to the floor of Parliament. The next one is a payment of...
Chairman, thank you. We will delve into it well because we need the money. Honestly, I wish today we could pinpoint who to surcharge, but as you have advised, we will take it up and see what better conclusion we can come to. Thank you.
The next infraction is on paragraph one ninety-eight, payment of on-end salaries. Honorable...
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
So this infraction has to do with payment of an end salaries to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and thirty Ghana cities. So the auditors noted that eight staff who had separated by debt suspension and resignation and leave of absence received on-end salaries totaling the amount stated above. So there are eight of them, one who is deceased. The recommendation is that Commissioner J... The recommendation is that Commissioner General should recover this amount from all seven and the next of kin of the deceased. Where are we in terms of recovery?
Thank you very much. We have at the moment recovered about 157,758 ten peshawas out of the 250,492 73 peshawas.
Okay, Commissioner.
Making a total of about 89.61%. There are two recoveries. There's also another element of recovery, which is 66,799 38 peshawas. So the two make up the total recoveries of 157.
Has this, the evidence of this recovery has been presented to the auditors?
Yes, Chairperson.
Auditors, can you confirm if such an amount has been recovered from all eight?
Honorable Chair, the assertion made by the Commissioner is, is accurate. Thank you.
So Commissioner, what steps are you taking to recover the difference?
Thank you. There are one or two of them that we are pursuing through their, what do you call it, pension funds and we've written to the, the entities that hold the funds to be able to recover these monies, the remainder.
Just by way of information to the committee, the officer who validated all these payroll, is that officer still appost?
Chairman, let me explain that the, there was a process of validation that was running on a quarterly basis. What we have found out is that the quarterly process actually sometimes gets caught up with events within the quarter. So in order to improve and to prevent such event reoccurring, we have introduced one, a monthly validation by officers from the various centers with finance and a quarterly validation by the internal audit to make sure that this, this does not recur going forward.
Thank you.
The next infraction is on paragraph 202. Yes, and Madam Chair, yes.
Commissioner General, on the report, it stated that the amount should recover with interest. So I want to know from you, whatever you have recovered, is it part with interest or you here to, I mean, recover the interest? Thank you.
Now I've been informed that I need to say 202. So go ahead, paragraph 202.
Thank you, Chair. So this is, this infraction is to do with indebtedness of state institutions. So when the auditor general reviewed the debt stock of the large taxpayers' office, they noted that nine institutions owe the authority taxes amounting to 47,411,774.68 Ghana cities. The recommendation was for the Commissioner of the Domestic Tax Revenue Department to ensure that the head of the large taxpayers' office recovers the debt owed by applying the debt enforcement processes. Can you give the progress of this recovery?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, tax indebtedness of state institutions is one of the challenges we go through as, as an authority. And I think any time we come here, this has been a topical issue that we go through. The story hasn't changed and most of these state institutions are owing us. The issue before us, Madam Chair, we've just recovered 59,000 out of that. So we still have 47.3 million of this amount still owed by the state institutions mentioned in the report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So Graphic Communications Group, out of the 3.4 million, how, how much have they paid?
Madam Chair, they, they haven't paid anything.
Graphic hasn't paid anything?
Yes.
Geohog Distilleries, they owe 2.1 million. How much have they paid?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, they haven't paid anything. With the exception of Ghana Water, that has paid the 59 million, the rest of, the 59,000, the rest of them mentioned having paid anything.
So Akosombo Industrial Company, 1.6 million, they haven't paid anything. Airtel Ghana Limited, 37.7 million, they haven't paid anything. Airtel Mobile Commerce, 1.8 million, they haven't paid anything. PBC Limited, 268,000, they haven't paid anything. The Good Old Time Oil Refinery, 136,000, they haven't paid anything. Glow is here. Glow, Glow Mobile Ghana Limited, 185,000, they haven't paid anything. What time lim, what Ghana Water has paid, has cleared. Is it Ghana Water has cleared, right?
Yes, with respect to this, they've cleared their liability.
They've cleared?
Yes.
So the other ones, what time limit do you have for them?
Madam Chair, they've exhausted their time limit and as I indicated, one of the challenges we're facing as a revenue-collecting institution has to do with indebtedness by the state institutions. In fact, Madam Chair, what we are seeing in here is, is related only to 2023. But if you get the indebtedness of the state institutions, they are far more than this. So it's a big challenge for us when it comes to revenue mobilization in the country. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Please, let the committee know what your challenges are.
Very well. We will, we will submit to you the total indebtedness of the state institutions to the, to the committee for you to assist us to how we can recover.
I'm not asking for you to submit the total indebtedness. I want to know what your challenges are so the committee can best assist.
The, the challenges has to do with cash flow from these state institutions. Some of them mentioned are having serious cash flow challenges. So as a result, they are unable to honor their tax obligations. That is as simple as that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, I just want to find out from the Commissioner. He says that the challenges they face has to do with the state institutions. And he's even saying they will, they glad to furnish us for us to assist them. I don't know. The committee is not adept or revenue collected. I mean, that's not part of our mandate to assist you. You have been mandated to collect revenue on behalf of government. So if you have state institutions owing these huge sums of money, what are you doing to ensure that these monies are recovered from these state institutions? Because I know if it were a private company, perhaps you would have sent your men to go and lock up their offices, waiting for them to come and pay for you to open. What are you doing as far as this debt is concerned? How are you going to recover them? We want to know the practical, I mean, steps that you are taking to ensure that these monies are, are recovered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Madam, Madam Chair, just before the, the Commissioner General comes in, I noticed that the first one is actually under the honorable colleague who just spoke, Ministry. All right, well, it looks like you must help them all.
Thank you, Madame. Thank you, Madame Chair. Certainly, we, we don't intend to make the august committee a debt collection one. We don't intend to do that at all. But I would say that we continuously engage these institutions. The law normally permits us to grant them about six to 12 months repayment plan, which the Commissioner earlier indicated they have exhausted. For some of these institutions, we've gone ahead to even take the highest enforcement measures, including garnishing their accounts. But those things use nothing when there's nothing in those accounts. So we are continuously engaging and discussing with them to look at improvement in their business and at which point that they can make good some of these amounts. So as I said, the challenge is more in terms of the performance of these institutions and their ability to pay their taxes on time. But nonetheless, we're still keeping our eyes on them to make sure that at any point in time where we are able to collect some of these, we will do so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next infraction is on paragraph 206. Honorable, I say we'll take that one.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Commissioner, this figure looks very frightening to me on paid value, value-added taxes. To the tune of 403 million Ghana cities, 360,040 Ghana cities and 4 million dollars, 328,067 Ghana cities. I hope it looks frightening to you as well. Commissioner? Paragraph 206. Please, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. So in, in respect of the 403 million Ghana cities, Madam Chairperson, we have so far recovered 232 million out of that amount. And we have, based on objections by some of these entities, we have agreed to 11.2 million as an assessment that need not be there. Let me state that at the point this, at the time that this audit issue was raised, some of the entities were going through an assessment and therefore we've taken out 11 million. So overall, we have so far recovered 60.31% and we are still pursuing the remainder 160 million with the entities that have not fully settled their debt.
Commissioner, if you look at number seven, Legon TSE, they are owing to the tune of 111 million Ghana cities. Is there any challenge? At this TSE, Legon, is there any peculiar challenge? And 4.3 million dollars, Commissioner? What is happening?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. The, the Legon TSE, that is the GRA Tax Center Service Center. So that is the center responsible for collecting. But that center is not the, the branch owing the debt. There were two balances that the center was meant to focus and collect. So the CD component, which is 72.8 million, so far. Sorry, the CD components is 111.4 million.
Yes.
And then so far, 72.8 million has been recovered with an outstanding 75%, with an outstanding of 27 million, which we are still pursuing. Then there's a component in USD, which is 4.3 million. This component, we have not been able to recover so far because the taxpayer has contested and has raised the matter with the independent Appeal Tax Board for resolution. And, and because that has been raised, we need to wait for the determination of the matter before recoveries can be made. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Hello, Commissioner General. If you contest a tax that has been held against you, aren't you supposed to pay 30% of that before you, you, you contest? So that if you say they have paid nothing, why do you accept that then they can go for arbitration or they can go to the independent tax institutions? But the law is very clear that if you want to contest any tax that is held against you, you have to pay 30% of that first before.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. So the 4.3 is the 70% which is subject to contest and that the 30% has already been paid to allow them to contest the, the entire amount here.
Commissioner, you made mention of recovery of about 200 million. Do we have evidence to that?
Madam Chairperson, we, we do have, yes.
Auditors, please, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that a total of 231,966,855.06 has been recovered and the objection determined is 11,296,101, making the outstanding balance to stand at 160,97,083.98. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, these figures look frightening. What are the measures being put in place to, to, to mitigate this risk? Seriously, I don't understand it.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. The collection of taxes, sometimes we are faced with a challenge and difficulties from, if I may say, difficult taxpayers. Nonetheless, we continue to focus on them and we continue to chase them to make sure that we collect the taxes that are due for the state. In, in some of these instances, it may take some time. But because we focus on them, we eventually will collect. So Madam Chair, I'd like to assure that we continue to work on the outstanding balances and then make sure that we collect the taxes for the state.
Commissioner, please give us some timelines so that this one will not roll over to next year. Well, seriously, these are taxpayers' money which we can use to build hospitals and et cetera. We cannot sit down in this country and we are not collecting our taxes. So please commit to some timelines. We don't want to see these old figures next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to assure that we are not sitting at all. Indeed, we are doubling our steps and running to make sure that we collect these taxes. I would like to assure that by the time we come before you next year, these amounts would have been fully recovered.
The Minister for Finance is taking leave of us. He has to attend to an equally important.
The deputy.
Oh, I'm sorry. The deputy minister is taking leave of us. He has to attend to very important assignment. He has to attend to very important assignment, but he'll be back to come and join us. All right, thank you very much, Minister. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I think that my question, the, those other officers sitting are capable of answering. So, but it's very simple. I want to understand, the assessment period as indicated in the auditors' report is for twenty twenty three. And here, we are, so far, we are chasing debts in relation to twenty twenty three, and the highest figure I have heard is you've been able to collect seventy five percent for one of them. That is the one with the highest figure, which is Legon T S E. My question is, as the one who actually does the assessment of these taxpayers, do you take into account their capability and then the conditions prevailing within the tax period, such that we don't over, we don't overstate the expectation in terms of the revenue expected, and we are unable to recover or we are unable to realize it at the end of the year? Because here we are in twenty twenty five, so twenty twenty four is also pending, and we might run into the same situation. And when we, we're chasing, I don't think that it will be prudent, or maybe it would be okay for us to be chasing debts in relation to twenty twenty three and then twenty twenty four to come to add. You are there, so maybe you can share with this committee some of the, your experiences, such that you don't overstate what your expectations are, and then we come, you know, realizing that you are, you are not working. Perhaps you are working hard enough, but you are not realizing it because the budget, the targets that you have of these entities are just not reasonable.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I think to understand this, we should know the basis of the assessment that we do in the Ghana Revenue Authority. We have different types of assessments. We have provisional assessment, we have the survey assessment, and we have audit assessment, which we normally call additional assessments. Now, most of the liabilities that we are seeing here come after audits. So you might have paid all your liabilities, pay your survey assessment or your provisional assessment. The Commissioner General has the power to come after and come and look into your books and see whether indeed you paid all taxes due. So you have instances like twenty twenty three that we are talking about. This is as a result of audits that were done in twenty twenty four, and this one raised the liability that no, in twenty twenty three, looking at your returns, you still have some liabilities that you are supposed to pay. And this is where we normally have contests between us and the taxpayers. So some taxpayers may object, come with further and better particulars to show that no, the assessment is not true or it is true. So for most of times, with our survey assessment returns, with taxpayers far, we collect not less than ninety five percent of that. So we don't have much problem when it comes to that. But with the additional assessment, this is what we normally have. And this is a continuous thing that we do, because we have to ensure and satisfy ourselves that taxpayers are declaring the correct taxes to the state. So we continue to have this assessment coming, because you have up to say yes, that the Commissioner General can go to review assessment. And when that is done, whatever liability that comes up, we collect. But on your other question as to whether we assess the ability of the taxpayer to pay before we raise the assessment, for us as Ghana Revenue Authority, once we know that the tax is due, our duty is to levy and collect. So if the taxpayer feels that he is not in a position, I think that power rests with Parliament, and they have to route it through Parliament if they want waiver of the taxes. Commissioner General don't have that power. It rests with Parliament. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Honorable colleagues, at the rate we are going, if we don't hurry up, we'll finish at eight P M. So let's limit follow-up questions, please. The next paragraph is paragraph two one zero, and Honorable Adam would take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. Mr. Chairman, paragraph two one zero is about unpaid income taxes amounting to two hundred and eighty seven million, three hundred and thirty three thousand and one Ghana cedis, and two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty one U S dollars, and one forty nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty six euros. In the management response, management agreed to collect the debt by enforcing the debt's recovery procedures. I would want to find out from the Commissioner General if he can update the committee on how much they have recovered so far and when they intend to collect the rest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In respect of the tax debt denominated in U S D, we have fully recovered it. And then also, in respect of the component denominated in euros, that has also been fully recovered. Then the second component of two hundred and eighty seven point three million, for which we have recovered about fifty eight percent, and we are focusing to collect the remainder of one hundred and twenty one point five million. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Section fifty one of the Revenue Administration Act twenty sixteen, Act nine one five, gives the Commissioner the power to even use court proceedings to recover the money. I want to find out from him what he is doing to recover the rest of the forty two percent that is left, and which processes has he employed so far to recover those monies for the state?
Thank you very much. So the enforcement processes includes, in this particular case, settling some of the tax debt for the taxpayer to settle over a period of time. If that fails, then some of the other enforcement measures may include physically sealing of their business or garnishing their accounts, and these are the very highest form of enforcement. And these are used rarely, except in the cases where the taxpayer willingly, willfully fails to settle after we've agreed. The court process is one of the final resort, where we take all the measures and we are not able to. But in these instances where we are, the taxpayers are paying, we have not moved the court process yet. However, where we have to, Madam Chair, we do go to court to use the laws, to use the courts to enforce the recovery.
All right, next infractions on paragraph two one four, and Honorable Nanosai would take care of that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, please, are you there, two one four?
Oh, sorry, Chairman.
Are you, you are there? Okay. Commissioner, it looks as if your offices are killing the state. Unpaid P A Y E, pay as you earn taxes, totally one three nine eight three three and one hundred, one thirty nine million, one thirty nine million, and five hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty five, this is due to the state, U S dollars, this is due to the state, Commissioner, and your offices. The same Legon is contributing the highest in this infraction. The auditors recommended that the Commissioner, the Commissioner, Domestic Task Revenue Department Division, should enforce its debt recovery procedures to recover the debt and apply the provisions of Act nine one five. Commissioner, these are, these are monies they've deducted from the employees. They've already deducted it. So why are they not paying the state? Why is the money, Commissioner? I don't know what you are coming to say again, but the state needs the money.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. As the Commissioner D T R previously mentioned, the assessment regime we have is either provisional of self-assessment. However, after the taxpayer has done their own assessment, as not authority, we go back to check and verify whether the assessments were done correctly and accurately, in line with law. So these debts are raised after we've conducted the audit. So we are not killing the state, indeed, we are making sure that the state survives by collecting the additional taxes that we find through the audit. Madam Chair, the, again, there are two components here. In terms of the dollar, that it has been fully recovered, and in terms of the C D that so far we have recovered forty seven percent. So that, that is the current state of this, and we are focusing to make sure that we'll bring the debt to zero.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. But in terms of the C D, in nominal figures, how much have you recovered? We, the percentages will confuse the ordinary person. We want to know how much you've.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We have recovered forty nine point three million Ghana cedis.
All right, the next infractions on paragraph two one eight, and Honorable Anest would take care of them.
Thank you, Chair. So this has to do with unpaid withholding taxes to the tune of one hundred and one million, eight hundred and seven, four hundred and ninety four, and U S dollars of five million four hundred and fifty one. Commissioner, can you tell us so far, if there's been any recovery of this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This matter relates to the same company which, which featured in the previous point, which is Tech Africa Offshore Limited. Again, they have contested the U S D of five point four million, and they have brought the matter before the Independent Tax Appeals Board, and we are going through the process with them. In respect of the C D component of one hundred and one point eight million, we have recovered thirty four point four million, and have also reexamined six point nine million out of that debt. So overall, forty point sixty six percent is resolved or recovered.
Thank you. Auditors, can you confirm if thirty four million has been recovered out of this?
Yes, Honorable Chair, an amount of thirty four million, four hundred and thirty five thousand, four hundred and ninety one point eight seven has been recovered.
Thank you.
The next one is paragraph two two two. Honorable Jeffrey, please.
Yeah, this infraction has to do with unpaid communication service tax. Five communication service providers had, had not paid one million, nine hundred and five thousand, six hundred and fifty seven point three two as communication service taxes to the Commissioner General. The Auditor General recommended that the Commissioner, Domestic Revenue Tax Department, ensures that the heads of the tax officers concerned collect the communication services tax from the service provider, from the service providers. Has that been done?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Out of the one point nine million, we have recovered one point eight four million, representing ninety seven percent. And we continue to use various enforcement actions to retrieve the outstanding balance of sixty five thousand. Thank you.
Commissioner General, we have pages upon pages about the same issue, about collections. Now, let's make it easier for you and for us. Why don't you go through all these? Give us a comprehensive list about what your debt is, what you've collected so far, and what you are going to do to collect the rest of it. Those individual T S Es will do the same thing and then send it to you. And if we could have that within thirty days, that will solve your issues and solve our issues, but it is the same mundane thing. And if we could do that for us, that will help all of us in this situation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will gladly accept that offer from the committee and submit a comprehensive position to the committee as directed, yeah.
Within thirty days? Okay. Now, if you look at the paragraph three one at three eight one, that one is a little bit different, unapproved tax exemptions. That's from Western Region, Takrawi. Okay, that would also be part of the report that you will give us. Explain to us why unapproved tax exemptions to the.
Madam Chair, three eight one has been resolved at the moment, yes.
Commissioner General, how was it resolved?
Yes. Yeah, we, we have provided the auditors with the parliamentary approval for those tax waivers.
Respective.
No, this, at the time of the audit, the approvals were in existence.
Auditors, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
So in that case, Commissioner, Commissioner General.
Chair.
Would expect that.
With respect, if you can permit me. Yeah, with respect, there are two issues here separately, like I wanted to take it on, like paragraph three five eight, release transit transaction pending, Ghana Revenue Authority Custom Division, and then another one also.
Sir, this is all part of the things that he is going to get for us within thirty days. You know, we are sitting again at the end of September. So by that time, he would have brought it, and if he hasn't brought it, we'll call him again for him to come and meet with us. So Commissioner General, you and your people. So Commissioner General, you and your people are discharged.
Thank you very much.
Now, let's call Statiscare Service, please.
Madam Chair, on behalf of the authority and management and staff and our minister, we would like to thank you for the opportunity of appearing before you. And we would like to assure that the directives that have been given will comply on or before the date. Thank you very much.
And thank you. And we look forward to GRA achieving its target for 2025. Thank you.
Statiscare Service, are you here?
Is Statiscare Service here? Ministry of Finance?
Okay. Order, order. We are, we are still live on air.
We understand Statiscare Service is still not here. And so we would like to reschedule Statiscare Service for 29th September 2025. Ministry of Finance, you have to come with Statiscare Service on the 29th of September 2025 because we understand they are not here. So this brings us to the end of the session for this particular sitting. And we would like to thank honorable members for their devotion and time to this Public Accounts Committee of the Ninth Parliament. Also like to thank the Ghana Audit Service for the immense work they have done in helping us come up with these infractions and see how best we can all work together to bring these infractions to a minimum and also collect every penny that has gone the other way. Also like to thank the ministries, departments, and agencies that attended upon us. We will come back again on the 29th of September and we'll look at, we'll continue with the reports on the Auditor General on the public accounts of Ghana for ministries, departments, and other agencies, as well as the audit reports on statutory, statutory accounts of governments. The statutory...
Public boards and statutory corporations.
Public boards and statutory corporations of Ghana. We also look at that one in our next sitting. I would like to thank our media people for the support you have given to us throughout our sitting. We thank the secretariat as well as Parliament and the HANSAT department. And we hope that per the instructions we have given now to all auditors, you carry them out as is expected of you. Within thirty days, we would like for the auditors to receive all the payments, all the instructions that were given for us to follow within the thirty days. And we look forward to coming back to assess how far or how much we have recovered in terms of the monies that we are supposed to recover. And so on this note, we'd like to thank everybody, thank the people of Ghana for watching and also giving us their inputs on some of the issues that have been raised. We will follow to the letter the one concerning the payroll, the one concerning Ghana Education Service, and the taxes as well that we need to recover. So thank you very much and thank everybody, I mean, for making this happen. Rankin, you have been a very good chairperson for this sitting. And we look forward to you taking up the mantle again when we come back because it is still reports on the 2024, 2024 financial year. Thank you very much, members. Thank you.